I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please. I don't know if Joey's doing it or if you are.
Yep, I'll do it. Not sure. Okay. Sorry. Commissioner Cora?
Present.
Commissioner Mathias?
Present.
Commissioner Rosinsky?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, I'd like us to consider the agenda for this evening. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Next on the agenda, consideration of claims.
Minutes, ma'am.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. Consider approval of the minutes of the April 1st, 2020 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second on the minutes for the April 1st meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Consideration of claims.
We have payroll ending April 10th, 2020, of $1,178,996.77. And for miscellaneous claims, $685,183.75.
Motion to approve, Madam President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Next on the agenda, we are very delighted to have Senator Mike Bohacik, one of our own, here to do a presentation. So, welcome, Senator.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Commission. I appreciate your time today. One of the things you get to do as a legislator is you get to honor folks for things that they have done. And today, I get to do that for one of our citizens. It's a young lady. Her name is Emily Graves. She lives here in La Porte. She's certainly somebody that comes to the radar very often. I see her name in the paper. I see some of the great things that she's done. Recently, she was honored with the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards. So, what's happened is, due to her plethora of community work, she's being honored for one of the things that she's been doing since she was quite young. So, at the age of six -- get my glasses out, you're getting old. So, at the age of six, Emily bought several boxes of Girl Scout cookies with her own money, solicited donations to buy some additional, and she donated those cookies to various veteran service organizations throughout the area, and also helped to box and ship those cookies to active servicemen throughout the world. And that wasn't enough. So, most recently, she has solicited help from more than 150 volunteers, purchased over 5,000 boxes of cookies, packs them up at an annual event, ships the cookies both to active military and veterans, and personally hands out cookies to veterans that are at the VSA's, Veteran Service Hospitals, Honor Flights, and other military and veteran events. The Prudential Spirit Award is the largest youth recognition program. It's based solely on volunteer service, and the distinguished families of finalists and state honorees are selected based on a criteria including their personal initiative, effort, impact, and personal growth. This is a big honor, and this is all done on our own. And to be able to have a young person take this step and to put together her own little non-for-profit, so to speak, that's impactful and it's important to our veterans, I was pleased to be able to author a resolution that was read across the Senate floor and co-sponsored by Representative Pressle that carry it for me in the House. So, typically, you would be here with us, and I would have it framed, but since Hobby Lobby is closed, I'll buy you the frame when this is over. So, I will be -- I'll bring this by your house, so you will have that for yourself. And I'm very proud of you and very pleased to be your senator. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any comments, Emily? Emily, can you speak?
Yes.
Can you hear us? Okay. Any comments you'd like to make? Yes, we can hear you. Congratulations. We're very proud of you, but we thought you might want to make a few comments.
So, thanks for having me. It's not really good.
We can hear you. We can hear you. You're doing great.
Let them know how far it's gone. Where have you gotten today? How many have you collected?
You covered the basics of the organization, but I can add on a little bit to it.
Please do.
But this year, I believe, we're up to about 35,000 -- oh, I've been corrected, 40,000 boxes.
Wow.
I thought you were correcting again. Something, 40,000 boxes collected over the years. We just finished up our 2020 -- or I guess, was it 2019 to 2020? I always forget when this is.
2020.
2020 cookie season, basically. So, we have all of those boxes now. They can't be packed yet, for obvious reasons, but they're about to be packed, and as soon as possible, we'll start handing them out for this year.
Where are some places you take them?
Some places I take them? All over the place. Obviously, we give them out to veterans when we get names. We send them to active military members when we have addresses. But we've also gone to a lot of Honor Flights is one of the big ones. We've gone to many Veterans Reunions. We've been to a VA hospital. We've been to Walter Reed Hospital. I've done the Veterans Day event at my school and handed out cookies there.
Emily, may I ask a question? Tell us about what's driven you to do such a major project? 40,000 bucks of cookies to veterans all over the world. That's pretty darn amazing. So, what drives you? What makes that work for you?
To go to the very, very beginning, when I was six, the thing that started it all was basically I was selling Girl Scout cookies. It was my first year selling Girl Scout cookies, and my mom asked me how I could use these cookies to help others. And I said that I wanted to buy some boxes for soldiers. I have no idea why I said that. I don't remember the conversation, but I said I wanted to give some to soldiers. Now, obviously, a lot of years have passed. I'm more -- because of cookies for soldiers, I know more about veterans and soldiers, and that, in turn, drives me to keep on going on, because the more I know, the more I know that there are needs in the community and that receiving a box of cookies is valuable to the veterans we help to be remembered and for the active soldiers or active military members, I guess, not soldiers, active military members, or gives them a piece of home that can be a small comfort in, like, very stressful times.
Yeah, that's wonderful, Emily. Thank you. Dr. Cora?
No, I just wanted to say, congratulations, Emily. We're very proud of you, and thanks for all the extraordinary work you have done. This is truly inspirational. Thank you very much.
Commissioner?
Thank you.
Yeah, I've had the honor of knowing Emily for a long time. Emily, switch. What do I always call you?
His hero.
My hero.
My hero, yeah. When she first started doing these programs, they did at our VFW in Roanoke Prairie, where they would pack up the boxes of cookies to send out. And it got so huge, had so many cookies, we didn't have enough room. They had to move to the fairgrounds. But she is pretty extraordinary, and we did have some soldiers came back to one of the events to help pack up, and they had been on a receiving end. I think they're in Iraq, and they said, there's stuff coming in all the time from here or there, but when the Girl Scout cookies come in, it's like a mad excess. Everybody's there waiting for the Girl Scout cookies.
Yeah, that's right.
They really appreciate them, so she is definitely my hero.
So, Emily, you've heard from some of your community leaders, and I guess what I would like to say is, you are casting a bright light wherever -- there's a saying, bloom where you are planted. And so, you have not only bloomed, but you've cast a light of kindness throughout La Porte County and throughout the veterans' community. So, on behalf of everyone in La Porte County, thank you so much for your leadership. Let's give her a hand.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
And I'll get these over to you guys. Probably drop them off tomorrow for you.
Thank you so much.
And another resolution, and this is a memorial resolution for former Commissioner Bill Hager. Bill, I served with Bill, and Bill was a friend. You know, I think Bill was a friend to everybody. You were never a stranger for very long around Bill. His son, Curtis, here as well. And, but, you know, sometimes when you do these, you never -- you know, you think you knew the person, but you didn't until you start doing some research and, you know, as you're drafting the resolution. This was also a joint resolution that crossed both chambers. As a memorial resolution, we took 30 seconds of silence, the entire chamber, to memorialize Bill. And also, Representative Pressle carried this for me in the House with a similar ceremony. You know, Bill passed away back in January. He was -- Bill was 84 years old. Bill was a lifelong resident of La Porte, and he would remind you of that whenever you asked him. Following school, Bill joined the Marine Corps. And I knew Bill was a Marine, but I didn't know he served in the Korean War. Following Bill's discharge, he spent just countless hours dealing with veterans' issues and helping veterans, and that's a tradition that his son carries on even now. Bill returned to La Porte in 1958 and married Ellen, his wife, for all this time. And I know Ellen as well, and Ellen and Bill were quite the couple. And together, they raised four children, Craig, Chris, Kurt, and Kathy. After Bill's military service, he worked for Smith Chevrolet before starting his own business, Ace Auto. Bill was active in the Boy Scouts with his kids. He was the leader of Troop 389 in La Porte. In 1971, Bill entered public service. He was elected to serve as a La Porte County Justice of the Peace. I didn't even know we had those. But we did. And he did that for two terms. Bill came back to public service in 2001, from 2001 to '09, as a county commissioner. Bill is survived by his wife, Ellen, and his children. You know, I've got -- I think everybody has some pretty funny Bill Hager stories, but when I first became a commissioner, I was a single dad, and I had custody of my children, and they were quite small, you know, four and five years old. And sometimes, I could not get babysitter assistance to be able to watch my kids, so I'd have to bring them to a meeting, which means you have to sit up on the same dais that you're on right now. And I had to ask Bill permission, because he was the president. I said, "Bill, do you mind if I bring my kids up to the dais?" And he goes, "No, as long as I can buy them at a Hershey bar," and they get to wear my hat. So, I mean, Bill was just really a hoot, and he was the toughest guy I ever knew, and Bill knew how to disagree without being disagreeable. And I was just proud to be able to work with him, proud to be able to know him. And although it's a time of sadness to have somebody pass, to be able to recognize them and their accomplishments and the impact that they've had in their community, and specifically on individuals, it's certainly a testament to a life well-spent. So, with that, I want to just take a few seconds of -- we have a moment of silence?
Absolutely.
To remember Bill. I'd appreciate it.
Moment of silence granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to present copies of these resolutions. Once again, I would have had these framed, but based on our current situation, we cannot do that. I will shake your hand, even though we're not supposed to.
Very much.
And thank you for giving us your father for those years that I was able to work with him.
And I'd just like to say one thing. I know he knew each and every one of you.
Yeah, he sure did.
Yes. It was hard not to know him. And when he was questioned about why he was a commissioner and things like that, the one thing he had to say was it was for La Porte and for the people.
Yes.
That's the only reason he had it, and that's the only reason he did it. And each and every one of you made part of his life much better, so thank you, and I'll accept this proudly from my father and our family.
He made our community better, just by being Bill Hager. Everyone knew him, and there was a lot of him to love.
Everybody has a story.
Another time we'll tell our story.
And a smile, and a --
And a smile, and a joke, absolutely.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
I appreciate it. You know, appreciate the good work you guys are doing as we muscle through what is a real challenging time for our community. You know, feel free to reach out to either myself or Representative Pressle as issues come up. And it's been a pleasure working with you guys, and by all means, let's keep things going forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you being here, sir. Next on the agenda, we have any public comment? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time for general public comment? Any members of the public who would like to speak at this time? All right, hearing none. Let's move on to department -- do we have anyone that wants to speak?
No.
Okay. Any department reports, department head comments? Any department heads who wish to speak and give their reports? Feel free at this time.
Good afternoon. This is Barb Mossman from Human Resources. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Barb.
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry, I can't get my video to connect to the meeting for you.
That's okay.
I just wanted to let everyone know that our county park is still looking for part-time maintenance individuals for the season, and they're starting those individuals off at $10 an hour. They must be at least 18 years of age and have a valid driver's license and a viable form of transportation. So, if anybody knows anyone that is looking for some seasonal work right now, the Parks Department can definitely use the help. Community Corrections is also looking for a residential officer. This is a part-time position also, and they're looking for someone who would be able to work Sunday and Mondays on the midnight shift. And this candidate does need to be a male, so I just wanted to put that out there so everybody can spread the word and see if we can get some candidates coming in to the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. If everyone who's on Zoom could mute their microphones unless you're ready to speak, that would be helpful, because there's been some background noise. Any other department heads who wish to give a report or make some comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes. Very -- just very briefly, if there's not another department head speaking already, I just very quickly, at the close direction of several of the commissioners, Dr. Cora, yourself, and Dr. Rosinsky have been adamant at directing both Mitch and I's efforts to find grant funds that might be of some assistance during the COVID crisis. Our small business community has, not only the small, but all the businesses have been substantially impacted. Mitch and I were on a phone call yesterday morning, late morning, with the regional director of the OKRA office, and we were able to find a way in. We have submitted a letter of intent to the OKRA office to capitalize a, what would be a lifeline program, small grant program, to the small business community outside the communities of Michigan City and La Porte because of the fact that they are, in fact, CDVG entitlement communities. And we will be finalizing that grant application, but we did get the letter of intent submitted under the wire. They've acknowledged our receipt, and with a little luck, we'll be successful in securing that particular grant for $150,000, which would impact substantially the small business community. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We are very pleased to find a way in for this particular COVID program, and we're still working very diligently to find additional resources and like what we're seeing for the broadband opportunities. But at this stage, that's all we have.
Madam President, members of the Commission, if you could perhaps go on record in support of the letter of intent, you can retroactively approve its submission yesterday. And I would say that Tony, Matt, and Mitch have been working mightily to try to come up with some dollars to help during the COVID crisis for some of our struggling businesses, and this seems to be a great opportunity to be able to do that. But having that in the record in terms of your endorsement of the letter of intent would be helpful as well.
I'll make a motion to that effect, Madam President.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to support and provide a letter of support for this grant opportunity. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Tony. I want to make sure that we go on the record of saying that we've asked a couple county employees to really be our point people around finding federal dollars and bringing them back home. So, we have emergency management and emergency responders who are looking for PPE and supplies and things, but we also are seeing a federal spigot that has our tax dollars that all of us pay every year, and we want to be sure that we're in line if there are dollars available, whether they're for small businesses, large businesses, manufacturers, home building, you know, food, any of those kind of support systems that will help our community recover and bounce back stronger than ever from this COVID crisis. We want to make sure that we have point people who are tirelessly scanning all of the documents that all of us are getting every day to find that money and bring it home. So, Tony, and Matt, and Mitch are part of that team. So, thank you for that.
Thank you for your support, Commissioner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Anyone else from a department that would like to make a report or speak about an issue at this time?
Yeah. Go ahead. Steve Hall, Director of 911. Real quickly, I'm a little late. I apologize, but if I may, I'd like you -- I'd like the Commission to know that this is dispatcher week this week. It started on Sunday, as you can see right here, and ends then on Saturday. We -- I just wanted to ask that the Commission recognize dispatcher, 911 dispatcher week, and we've already had a lot of love from Galveston and Cafe Trilogy, the Sheriff's Department, and Patrick's Grill bringing us supplies, food, and showing us their appreciation of Fort City Police in Michigan City. But I'm just asking that if you guys could please show us your support and then recognize this week as telecommunicators, and I appreciate that.
Madam President, I'd like to. We don't have a formal resolution, but I'd like to recognize the dispatchers who do a phenomenal job for all of our citizens in La Porte County, and most of my patients utilize their services, and they're very, very appreciative of the work they do. So, I want to recognize and honor the work of your entire team, Steve. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I apologize for being late. It was just with what's been going on. I went to do this last meeting, and I totally forgot.
Not a problem. So, we have a motion to pass a resolution in support of the amazing and dedicated team at our 911 center. Mr. Rosinsky, do we have a second?
We do.
All right, we have a second on a motion to resolve, to celebrate, and honor the team at the 911 center. You know, dispatchers are truly the first responders. They handle people at probably their darkest and scariest moments, and they do it with dedication and with absolute professionalism. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Thank you, Steve, and please bring that message back to your team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time? Give a report or make some comments.
Yeah. The other Tony, Tony Mancuso, the Health Department? Can you hear me?
Yes. Not well, Tony. If you could put your -- go a little bit closer to the computer microphone, that'd be great.
Okay. Just to give you a heads up, what's going on? As you know, the cases are getting, day by day, we're getting more and more. Nursing staff is pretty much getting overwhelmed, so we're spreading the tracking to the environmental section, and eventually, we're going to have to hire more people to help us out, because as the tests come in quicker, the cases come in quicker, and we're having a hard time keeping up, so I'll keep you posted on that. Other than that, Dr. Ducey's going to give you an update with the Rested Department.
So, Tony, before I pass to Dr. Ducey, I want to remind you of the offer from your county colleagues that if you need additional support for your staff, I know the nurses and your staff are getting more calls in every day, and tracing takes an awfully long time, so there are people who stand ready to help you. If you just put out the word how many people you need, we want to make sure that we're using the staff that we have at this time, who may be not as busy as they normally are, because they tend to work with providing services to people. This is a time where we stand ready to help you, so please make sure you reach out when that help is needed.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Ducey, would you like to present?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, here we can.
Okay. I'm not very good at this. Just basically, a little bit of an update. I'm sure you're all following the dashboard numbers as well as everybody else, that right now, at 3:30 today, we have 47 cases, and we've had -- excuse me, we've had five deaths. One of our biggest concerns, although DOC does most of the work with regards to this, of course, is the fact that it's now in Westville. There have been three positives that have been at the hospital. One was discharged to be followed there, and two of the other that are positive are both in ICU in critical condition. I know that our lead nurse, Jenny, has been in contact with the state and with the jail with regards to all these issues, and they're doing all their own contact tracing at this time. So, we've had two new public cases too, and they are doing contact tracing on those. And a couple of things that have also been talked about, of course, is the golf courses. And right now, they have been given notice of the need to do social distancing, which from experience, is not happening very well. I live across the street from one of the golf courses, and that concerns me greatly. But I think all in all, it's showing that social distancing does seem to be working not just for us, but for the other places that are practicing it, and the concerns when people still, of course, are for all of us, period. Is there any questions?
Madam President, I have a couple of comments. I've been in touch with Jenny and her team on a regular basis, and they're really doing an extraordinary amount of work. As I had commented here before, that contact tracing is a time-consuming, laborious work. It's hard work. But that's really, in public health, that is the way we contain diseases and get control over diseases, and that's something that needs to be done. In addition to contact tracing, I have also asked the team at the Health Department to do follow-ups. For example, if you identify a person with a positive test, you do the contact tracing, you notify them that somebody who they came in contact with tested positive. So, they either go for a test, or they monitor, self-monitor themselves and see if they're developing any symptoms. But in addition to that, I've asked Mr. Mancuso to do a follow-up, like a five days or a week later, to see whether they followed up on their symptoms and tracing to make sure that they don't fall through the cracks, and if they are having any symptoms, that they do go and get the testing done, and to make sure that if they have any difficulty finding a test, that we help them. So, I think that follow-up also is going to be put into place. So, Dr. Ducey and Tony, thank you very much for doing it. I think contact tracing is how we are going to control this and get our businesses back up and running again. So, thanks for doing it.
Thanks. Anybody else have a question? I have another call at 7:00, so I'm going to sign off if there's no other questions.
Do you have any other questions?
Thanks for joining.
No? Thank you so much, Dr. Ducey. Are there any other department heads who would like to give a report or speak? I see a lot of you on the Zoom call. Everyone else good? Okay, we'll keep on moving. Under Old Business, per the request of the Building Commissioner, we'd like to consider referring the proposed contractor wage fraud ordinance to the Plan Commission for additional review before we hold our second reading. Anyone want to speak on that?
I make a motion to refer to the Plan Commission.
Second motion.
So, we have a motion and a second, and this is in reference to a contractor wage fraud ordinance that was brought to this body at our last meeting, and upon discussion with the commissioners, we've decided that it needs further review. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Next, consider the contract with USI for the 2021 to 2023 bridge inspection. Mr. Sullivan, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Yes, J. Sullivan County Engineer, am I audible?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm asking for a consideration of signing the contract for our four-year bridge inspection. The contract, it's an LPA contract for a total of, for the four years, of roughly $343,000. Any questions?
I think we had a misunderstanding.
I think we had a misunderstanding at the last meeting, that this is the way we do business, that you do it a four-year.
Right.
I think Joey had a question on that, so I would make a motion that we pass that.
I second.
Does that explain?
Yeah, I think we understand now where we were a little bit fuzzy last time. We've got it. Thank you, Jay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry for not clarifying that beforehand.
No, no, we understand. Thank you. We have a motion and, Dr. Fur, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The contract has been passed. Thank you. Under New Business, consider.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Under New Business, consider the amendment to the Treasurer's credit card agreement with value payment system to permit phone payments. Lynn Spivak, our Treasurer.
Hi. We had this amend, like to have this amendment approved tonight. We first had our agreement with value payment systems in September of 2017, so they've been working off of the Beacon System, Assessor's Office software system online, and people can pay online, but a lot of people still do not have computers, and some people do not have a bank account. So, they get a card with have, with funds on it, and this was one way of having them be able to pay since we are on lockdown right now until the Governor releases the stay-at-home order. So, to be able to have a phone-in service, it costs the property taxpayer $1.95, which is very reasonable, and then they can make their payment through, through the system.
We've reviewed the contract. It's an amendment to an existing credit card agreement that are comfortable with the terms that are proposed.
Madam President, make a motion to go ahead and approve this.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the Treasurer's credit card agreement with value payment systems to permit phone payments for our citizens. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has passed. Thank you, Lynn.
And just as far as the Governor saying that the penalties for taxpayers would have a 60-day waiver of penalties, we still, as a Treasurer's Association, still did not get a special, approval of the waiver on special assessments. Like right now, we have South Coast that has waters or conservancy fees, and that's not considered taxes, so not all of a property tax has the waiver for 60 days. Right now, we also have solid waste under an ordinance, which is considered a fee and not a tax. We're not sure if that would get charged to 5% after May 11th. So, we'd just like to say what the Governor said, that he would like to have the taxpayers are encouraged to make timely payments on or before May 11th in order to ensure orderly operation of government. And the Treasurers all throughout the state would approve of this, that people still make their payment on May 11th, before, before May 11th.
Right. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. Next on the agenda, consider proposed settlement and full release in the matter of Terrence Cooper versus LaPorte County Sheriff's Department.
Yes. Madam President, members of the Commission, we've got a contested issue involving the Sheriff's Department and Mr. Cooper that we've been able to resolve with frankly, a settlement that is less than the cost of litigation. And this comes with the Sheriff's recommendation as well, and we're proposing a settlement at the figure of, total figure of $12,500, which would fully resolve any and all claims and secure a full release for the county in this particular matter.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the settlement.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the settlement and full release in the matter of Terrence Cooper versus LaPorte County Sheriff's Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has been passed. Next on the agenda, consider economic development corridor supplement with Lock Mueller Group. Mr. Bishop, our County Planner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, this is supplement number two. The county was successful in obtaining $264,000. That would provide a full, a full topographic survey, preliminary design, and geotech evaluation for segment one of the economic development corridors, which is from 35 to stable four, roughly 7,700 feet. Now, these funds, this is a, the time, it's time-sensitive. This has to be signed and delivered and inducted hands by May 1st. There is a 20% match on these funds. However, the city of LaPorte has agreed to pay the 20%, which would be $66,000. The total supplement is $330,000. The grant is 264, and the local match, 20%, would be $66,000. That was approved by City of LaPorte Board of Works last week. So, this wouldn't take, this would not take effect until the NEPA document was complete, but this would make sure that the project continues on and moves to the next stage in the process. So, I'm asking for your signatures tonight for the supplement, so this money is secured. In the upcoming week, in I guess your first May meeting, there's an MOU that's circulating, signifying the City of LaPorte's contribution of that $66,000. And I would seek to be on your agenda at that time for that, when that approaches.
Madam President, make a motion to approve this supplement with the Lock Mueller Group.
I would second that motion. Good work.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the economic development corridor supplement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Mitch, thank you as always. You are able to bring home the bacon, and we appreciate it. Next on the, next on the agenda, consider OX Cart permit system for online permitting. Mr. Warner from the County Highway Department.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Basically, what this is, is I know you're all aware that we've gone through the new ordinances for our wastes and oversized permitting. In regards to that, then it comes down to the, the part of how we issue permits and how we're going to go about that. This OX Cart is a company that was brought to us through Officer Elcock in the, in the Sheriff's Department in researching this. Basically, what this, this is a new way of how doing new online permitting for applications system, allowing easy management of the entire permit process for both local municipalities and trucking agencies. What this will actually do is there will be an online permit where it basically, it takes all the work out of it as far as for the counties involved. We wouldn't have to supply workers to manage all this. This company actually will do this all on their own. And it does, what it does, it makes it easily accessible for actually the law enforcement. They will actually have an account on there also where they can check these applications. Basically, I'm trying to do it the skinny of all this. How this would work is this, this agency will actually work with us and working with our ordinance and our fee structures. There's no cost to us whatsoever. There's no contract. We're able to leave at any time if we're unsatisfied with any, by means, but this is, like I say, this is kind of the new revolutionary way of doing things. What this would do is accommodate for, for the industry. You know, this is something that is available 24/7 to them. And how this would work is the fees will actually be paid by them online through, per se, like a credit card. We will retrieve our, 100% of our fee for the permit, and then how that would work, this OX Cart would get their payment on an additional accrument to that, that fee permit. So, their, their fees would range anywhere from $5 to like, per se, $15 maximum per permit, depending on the weight restrictions. So, this is something that we're looking into. There's, it's all, it's like a win-win situation for us because they say, we're, we're trying to make this as easy for everybody, and this would be something that they, I think would be good for, for all involved, where this is online accessibility. And a good instance of this is kind of in the, in the world we're dealing in, like something like today, where, you know, if everybody's trying to do things online and it, and it makes it more accessible. I think it's a win-win. I thought it's something we'd, we'd like to bring to you to see if we could continue this and, and see if this was something that with your approval that we could proceed on.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
We've looked at it. It looks to be a great concept to help in the whole weight, overweight truck issue monitoring, and of course, this Commission has moved forward aggressively in trying to protect county roads with that ordinance that you passed. We're certainly comfortable recommending this to you.
Motion to approve, Madam President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this permitting system, online permitting system for the County Highway Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Thank you, Mr. Warner. Great presentation, and please proceed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we want to consider the agreement between Nyheart and the Auditor's Office for the OPED actuarial report. Ms. Winski?
This is in connection with our GAAP report that the, the Auditor's Office is now in the process of doing, and this actuarial study will, will be for other post-employment benefits. And I think you all got a copy of the agreement, so I'm asking for your approval.
As the Auditor's Office has been working on trying to get us GAAP compliant, which is certainly required, there have been a series of contracts that we've had to enter into to go ahead and get that done, including with Baker Tilly. This particular process to prepare this actuarial report is needed as part of that. We're comfortable with the proposed agreement as well.
Motion to approve, Madam President.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the requirement for the Auditor's Office. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Next on the agenda, consider.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Next on the agenda, consider renewal with Gallagher Basset County's third-party claim adjuster for 2020. Mr. Jones is here. He's our agent of record. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, Madam President, Commissioners Shaw, Diane, how are you tonight?
Great.
Our past account manager that I think most of you have met over the last couple of years, Garrett Kesner, has been promoted, I believe, to a different position within the organization at Gallagher Basset. So, Megan Akers may be on the line with us tonight?
She is.
Okay, Megan, hi.
Hi, Megan.
She's going to manage the account now, moving forward for LaPorte County. And as you know, Gallagher Basset, our third-party administrator for our partially self-insured portion of your package, which is the traveler's liability line, that several lines in that liability section. They do a fantastic job for us. And she's going to report to you that there's been a, a small rate increase. I don't want to, I don't want to steal her thunder. However, we're going to experience an actual premium decrease because of the number of claims that we're anticipating based on the prior year history and experience. And I'll turn it over to Megan, so Megan, you can present that if you would.
Perfect. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Wonderful. Good evening, and thank you for the intro. I, just so you guys all know, I am located here in Indiana, out of my home, just north of Indianapolis in Westfield, so looking forward to hopefully meeting you all in person over the coming year once this all lifts. But as John gave us an introduction on, I'm here to present our one-year renewal. We are coming up for renewal on May 27th of this year. And we are proposing a 3% rate increase to our fees. So, for those of you who may not be familiar with how Gallagher Basset charges LaPorte County, it's on a fee-per-claim basis. So, with that in mind, the rate increase is to that actual fee per claim that we handle. But based on comparing our fees for the current term for 2019 versus what we're proposing for 2020, we're seeing about a $5,000 drop in the total fee that we're proposing. So, just a little background information on that, last year, we estimated the county to have about 49 claims throughout the year, and for 2020, we're estimating about 29 claims. So, just to look at the numbers, the current term's fees were at $39,812, and the proposed fees for 2020 that we are looking for approval for this evening is $34,561 for Gallagher Basset service fees. Does anybody have any questions about the specifics behind how we get to that final fee?
Madam President, just some background too for the Commission and for those watching. The county has used third-party claims adjusters for years to help keep down the cost of overall claims, determine and investigate the merits of particular claims. We've also got a process in place that has worked extremely well, particularly for the payment of small claims, so that the Commissioners are not inundated. If somebody's mailbox is taken out by a county highway truck, we get that paid for very quickly after a claim is submitted. We make sure that through Gallagher Basset and the small claims process, that those claims are processed. They do a great job with it. John and I have worked with them for years. They are particularly helpful at determining investigations on larger claims as well. They'll help us in terms of litigation prevention, also litigation avoidance, but once we're in litigation, to be able to help determine the merits of claims and to help keep our overall risk in check. And so, it's been a very good working relationship, and it's great to see that the premium has actually come down, so.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of bank for the buck there, and you know, they, they secure waivers when we need them. They use that small SIMs account to pay those bills that people get a little tempered about if, calling the Commissioner's Office if their mailbox is gone, and they expect that, you know, within a week rather than 30 days. So, we seem to get that right away, and they secure waivers for us as well, so that once we settle an account, those are.
Yeah, and it is great that your claim volume has dropped. I have to say, I don't always get to report that to my clients, so anytime we have that opportunity to, to see some relief there, that means good work is happening on the county's part.
Great.
Madam President, did you receive this via email? It's a metric chart of Gallagher Basset's fee structure, but on the last page is, is a place for your signature.
Oh, yes.
And I've got this copy if you do not, and I'll collect that, or Diane can email that directly over to Megan.
Okay.
Madam President, I make a motion to, to approve the renewal of the Gallagher Basset for the county's third-party claim adjuster.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second to renew Gallagher Basset's contract with the, with the county. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
And thank you, Megan.
Thank you. Thank you for your partnership.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we want to consider the approval of an addendum to Tiger Food Services contract for LaPorte County Jail. Sheriff?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are here asking for your approval for an addendum to the food service contract with Tiger Correctional Services that was dated December 11th of 2019. And when we originally put out a request for proposal back in September, October last year, the lowest average daily population that we quoted at that time was 350. We're almost 100 below that. I'm proud to report today that our jail population is 110 under capacity. And since the COVID-19 pandemic, our population has dropped, and it continues to drop, and therefore, the addendum is, is rather simple. It gives us meal prices that cover the lower population within the jail. We've looked at it. It's a sliding scale, and it does seem fair to us. We then sent it to the county attorney's office for review as well.
Sheriff Boyd, I had a question, you know, since you went with the Tiger Correctional Services, how has the experience been?
We're very, very pleased with them. Yes. Yep. We have had very few hiccups, and those hiccups were mainly at the beginning when they were getting used to our kitchen and how it worked in transitioning our employees to be their employees.
Great, thank you.
That's great to hear.
Couple of comments. One, the work that went into this food contract was significant by the sheriff, by his jail commander, by Jeanne Crossland. He's had a great team working on this, and it's, it's great to see the kind of productivity we've gotten on the contract. But he also mentioned something important, which I know the Commissioners are all interested in. The reduction in jail population didn't just happen. It has been a concerted effort by the Sheriff's Department, working with the prosecutor, with the judges, with probation, as they implemented Criminal Rule 26, which this Commission was aware of and certainly participated in. But it is a huge success in helping to reduce the jail population, those who are nonviolent, don't pose a threat to themselves or others. And to have that population so significantly reduced is a huge accomplishment for the entire criminal justice system in this county. So, I think, I know you're very proud of the efforts in that regard.
You know, one comment I wanted to make is, obviously, when we went down that path and did it, we never anticipated COVID-19, you know? But at a time like this, having lower numbers, it really is a blessing.
Oh, it absolutely is.
Oh, it absolutely is. It gives us room to quarantine, to isolate, to segregate like we've never had before. It's amazing. It's less taxing on staff. It's less taxing on our inmate population in our services as well. And our judiciary has been nothing but great, working together. It has been seamless. And I would stand here before you, even if we didn't have the COVID-19 pandemic, and tell you that our jail population is under capacity, and it quickly came under capacity by about the 3rd or the 4th of January. And that's exactly what criminal rule 26 was designed to do. We were very open-minded going into it, and we've been a huge proponent of it. And we pledged we were going to do everything to make it work. And because we went in so open-minded, and when I say "we", I don't just mean the Sheriff's Office, but the entire judiciary, it has been an overwhelming success.
Thank you.
Tremendous example of when everyone puts their mind to something, how they can get it done. This has been remarkable for me to observe everyone getting on the same page and working together across all the jurisdictional lines and lines of authorities. That's been really rewarding to see.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the addendum to the Tiger Food Services contract.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the addendum to the Tiger Food Services contract for LaPorte County Jail. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has been approved. Thank you, Sheriff. Next on the agenda, we are close to the end. We have Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Mrazinski.
Yeah, John Jones brought up something that kind of made me think. He mentioned about the mailboxes. That's one thing, even when you got a mild winter like we've had, that happens.
Yes.
And it's either we get the form in, it says we hit somebody's mailbox, or somebody calls up. And, you know, they're usually irate that somebody hit the mailbox. And they get called into Diane. She handles that. We have people calling in from, the department heads calling in saying, since the console shut down in-house printing, we need forms, we need paper, we do that. They call Diane. She handles that. We can have people call for the wrong department. You got a property dispute, or they need to talk to a different department, but they call the Commissioner's Office. Diane handles that. And now, with the latest calls we get are the summer residents, which we all look forward to, people coming for the summer. But coming on the weekends, they're coming back and forth from Chicago or from Michigan or from wherever. And the neighbors are concerned. They said, you know, these people, we don't know if they're bringing germs with them. And they're stopping at the gas station. We know they're stopping at the grocery stores. And, you know, those people call in. And with the added workload of the virus situation, there's calls coming in all the time, not only from residents, but from a lot of our department heads. What are we supposed to do about this? It seemed like this is the collection point. This is Big Ben. This is where everybody goes to find out what's happening. They call Diane. And I just want to draw everybody's attention to that, that let's try to, try to figure some of these things out. Because we're putting a tremendous workload on our assistant here. And she is definitely, sometimes just has to sit back and kind of regroup, because it is really, the phone will not quit ringing. And we talk about people working from home. It would be very hard for her to do that. But I think when this is over, we need to send her away someplace to decompress, because it has been really an unusual situation that we're put in here. But we're handling it. And thank your lucky stars that you've got somebody as aggressive and resourceful-
Yes.
-as our administrative assistant.
I second that.
I ditto, ditto that times 10. Dr. Cora, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. You know, I've been, every day I follow the numbers on the dashboard. And just in the last couple of days, our numbers have gone up significantly. We were concerned about spike, especially at WCC. And thanks to Senator Bohacek, Representative Pressel, and Representative Boy, we have been in communication with the DOC. And they are trying to do whatever they can to help address some of the concerns that we had. I just want to remind everyone listening out there that please continue to maintain your social distancing policy. It is working. And this is, you know, in some individuals, COVID-19 is a very mild illness, but in some individuals, and we don't know the reason why. A lot of people say it's not the virus that's causing it, it's but the immune response of the body that causes what is called as a cytokine storm that floods the lung in a matter of few hours, and then they just can't breathe. So just want to remind everyone, if anybody has symptoms, especially if they're having shortness of breath, that they should not play around with that. They should just seek medical attention right away. Tests are available, and we have been able to process many individuals who need testing. And so they are available. And if there is anybody who needs tests, please make sure you reach out to Franciscan, to LaPorte Hospital, to Beacon, and the tests are available. And as I mentioned earlier, our team at the Health Department, especially Jenny and her team are doing a very good job at contact tracing. Whenever I call, or in the morning, okay, these are the few cases. By the time I call, they have already reached out to them, and they are doing the contact tracing. So that's extraordinary work they are doing, and I greatly appreciate that. And Madam President, this morning, I visited some of the homeless shelters in Michigan City and met with the staff there. As we have discussed in our earlier meetings, the three areas I have been concerned the most are nursing homes. And our staff at the County Health Department are in close touch with the nursing homes to make sure that all precautions are being taken, and they have the PPE that they require. So that's been going smoothly. We were concerned about correction facilities, and we are continuing to address that. And we also have some concern about the homeless situation. And we have some very good people in Michigan City. I've met some wonderful individuals who volunteer at these facilities, and they have been doing it for years and years. I'm so grateful to them for their concern and who keep this community together. And actually, it was a very uplifting experience for me to meet some of them and the amount of time and effort they put into it. So with that, Madam President, and my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. You know, you talk about all of the good people. You know, we don't see the work that they do all the time. When a crisis happens, all of a sudden, we open our eyes and realize that these people, the Meals on Wheels volunteers, they do it every week, Red Cross, collecting blood, volunteers at the hospital. I guess I want to spend my few moments thanking the healthcare workers in this county, who really are our healthcare heroes, whether they're caring for our elderly in our nursing homes or on the front lines in the emergency department at one of the hospitals. They really are, they're really caring individuals, and they're putting their own lives at risk to take care of their county, our county community. I also want to draw attention to the county team. You know, I've only been on board for a little over a year and a couple of months. And so I wasn't really sure what the county team was all about. And I have to say, so many great professionals, so many people who go above and beyond, who care, who work long hours to make sure, especially during this crisis, it has really been apparent to me that folks, they will do whatever it takes to help each other and to help make sure that their department is functioning at full capacity. So that's been really, really impressive. I want to thank the emergency responders, our Sheriff's Department, the E-911 dispatch center. They just really do incredible work and are really amazing, dedicated. Health Department, those folks are swamped right now, and their efforts are just truly incredible. But we've lost five lives in LaPorte County from COVID-19, and that might not seem like a lot when you look to the south of us in Marion County, or you look to the west in Lake County. But five lives is a tragedy for LaPorte County. And, you know, each of those lives, those folks were someone special to a lot of people who cared about them. So we don't want to forget them, and we want to honor their passage. I'm glad we're working on the DOC issues, and I appreciate our state legislators helping us. Because the staff at the DOC are our neighbors. They are our family and our friends. They go into the DOC to do their really difficult jobs, and then they return to the community. They go to our grocery stores. They come back to our neighborhoods. We want to make sure that they're safe. We also want to make sure the inmates are safe, because they are also somebody's child, somebody's spouse, somebody's sister or brother. And they are humans, and we need to make sure that they are receiving the best care. So I appreciate the effort the DOC is putting into hearing our concerns and making sure that everyone is as safe as possible in such a difficult environment. A congregant environment of thousands of humans is a Petri dish for all kinds of germs. So I appreciate the efforts that are being taken to protect people. And again, making sure that people realize that, yes, it's tough. This is, we're in the boring part now. At the beginning, it was very novel, and everybody was really anxious about how would we adjust. But now it's plain boring. I'm bored with the things that are in my pantry. I'm tired of trying to figure out strange meals. You know, we're, there's not enough, it's not, I've got tons of work to do, but it's the other little things in life. We're used to our routines. We're used to being able to go where we want to go. And so while work is super busy, it doesn't make up for the fact that we're not able to, I'm not able to see my grandchildren. You know, you're same with my colleagues here. And so I just want to remind people to continue to be careful, to continue to be safe, be smart, and be safe. Social distancing is working. If you look at our numbers compared to other counties of similar population, we have been able to keep our numbers low, and I commend people for their efforts. The LaPorte County spirit is about taking care of each other and taking care of our community. And we want to keep doing that until the danger has passed. So thank you, everyone. Those of you moms and dads out there who are being schoolteachers as well as parents, I commend you. And this too shall pass.
Yes.
So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.